Meeting called to order. Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore. Please stand for silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As to comply with the open public meetings app, chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, the Star Ledger on January 7th, 2021, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. Our first item of business will be a proclamation. We have a proclamation recognizing International Overdose Awareness Day.
That's for Diane Shelton, so are you going to see her soon, or I'll get to work? One of us will get.
Okay, alrighty. We will now move on to the special events applications.
Good evening, Mayor Council. The first application is a request to hold a silent disco dance on the beach. Next is the thanks for giving 5K and splash. The Greek Orthodox Holy Cross event on September 12th. And last but not least, is a beach cleanup. Protect our beaches, seeking to do a cleanup on September 12th. Are there any questions on these applications? Thank you.
We are now on to items to be presented. We will have a presentation of proposed redevelopment of the Holy Spirit Church and adjacent property, 701 to 705 Second Avenue, block 2703, lot 3, by JLD Investment Group, LLC.
Good evening, everyone. My name is August Santori Jr. I'm the attorney for JLD. We have with us Daniel Condeor from Mode Architects. Just a quick.
I appreciate your standing, but I think you're enough to talk into the microphone. I don't think the people in the back can hear you.
Understood. I know with the mask, doesn't make it easy.
No problem.
Thank you so much.
And this is, where can I find my card? Okay. I'll find it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just once again, thank you for having us. We appreciate your time this evening. As indicated, I represent JLD Investment Group. Two principals are here this evening, they're in the audience. We have Mr. Mr. Ozzy Yassin. They've been involved in real estate development. I've been representing them for, well, Mr. Yassin, for over two decades. Done a lot of projects all around the tri-state area, dealing with redevelopment, rehabilitation, and also dealing with construction of new units. They're very passionate about this particular development, passionate about the community. Mr. Hannah is a local resident of Monmouth County, grew up in and around the area, and this particular project has been months in the making in terms of the study of it. They're extremely passionate about creating an economically diverse project that is going to be artistically designed and able to really be inclusionary for the entire community. And I think that's one of the things that we spent a lot of time dealing with in the development phase of this so far. You're ready to go when you have time. Okay. So we're going to walk you through some of the different outlines of this. I'm going to turn it over to Daniel a moment and let him walk through this particular layout and some of the overviews, the renderings that we have, to give you some details on the specifics of this particular project.
Okay, quickly, you know, as we brought on this project about three, four months ago, we made a site visit to the church and met with the owners and talked about whether or possibility what we can do, and one of the first things that came up is, you know, how do we, how do we preserve the church? The most important thing is to keep the church in place and then create a building or an apartment units that would complement it and also preserve the architecture and fill, you know, a space within the lot. So what you're looking at here is just a quick aerial plan of the site. The church is along Bond Street towards Second Ave corner. Main Street is on your left, Second Ave to the south, Third Ave to the north, and then you can see the church with the large parking lot and the existing rectory there. So just, I want to quickly walk you through the floor plan. So a part of redeveloping the church is the use of what we're going to do with it. The church, we're going to turn into townhouse style units, but there's an existing basement. So the basement of the existing church, we intend to use for amenity space. We have unit storage in the basement. We have a gym area. There's a small lounge and restrooms. There's access to that lounge along Bond Street. There's some existing stairs that go down directly from the outside. So that was the intent of the lower level of the church. And then this is the grade level of the property. So the main church floor is relatively higher than grade. It's about six or seven feet, so we're not showing any layouts there. But what we're proposing on the left, you'll see the new footprint for the building itself. In total, we're going to propose 52 apartment units. 20% of those units would be affordable. And at grade, we're showing here 60 parking spaces. That brings the parking ratio to about 1.2 spaces per unit. We are not including, we're proposing to park the affordable, so the 1.2 spaces per unit is for the market rate units. But I can go back real fast. What you can see quickly is that the front of the church along Second Avenue is important that we didn't, you know, protect the views and have an opening, so you could see the development of the property at the ground level. We have a small cafe area that we feel is a benefit to the community and residents for people to appreciate the existing architecture of the church. So we created that little space, and as we developed the plans and some of the renderings that you'll see, have created a courtyard and some public area and some open space to kind of showcase the existing architecture. So we can go to the next. So this is the first level of residential. So on the left, you'll see the apartments, basically like as a triangle with a leg and a center kind of courtyard. And then, once you get up above the parking, the building steps back quite a bit to further giving you open views and availability to see the church and the area around it. On the right side, you can see the townhouse kind of set up for the church. So what we're doing is we're creating units that are vertical within the volume of the existing church itself. So each one of those units will have its own entrance to the, from the outside. So we have seven of them. Some of the entrances are actually existing locations. We have to cut a few entrances on the, on the left side. We have some amenity space in the middle of the new building, and then we have our mix of one or two bedroom units. Go ahead. This is the second level of residential, and then the internal second level of the townhouse setup, where we have the bedrooms on the second floor and, you know, bedroom, bathroom, and then the second floor is basically the same, so we can kind of cruise through that. Oh, we can go back one, two. And on the left, on the right side for the church itself, the building kind of steps in, so there's a shed roof. I'll show you in the visuals. So we plan on flattening that and have balconies that overlook the courtyard and things like that. Go ahead. And again, this is the, another level. This is the third level of the residential, the third level of townhouses, and then the fourth level. It's basically the same setup. We have an open courtyard in the middle for light and air. And you go one more, and then we're proposing on the rooftop, a little amenity space with a pool and for sitting. You know, we're keeping it close to Second Avenue because based on the height of the church, if we want to look to the east, the church is higher than our building is proposed. The church is roughly about 75 foot to the ridge, the top of it, and where our roof is at like 55 feet. So we're significantly lower than the existing church, so that's why trying to take advantage of view cores along Second Ave to the east. I can go ahead. So here is a view of looking east down Second Ave, and you can see what happens when we try to, we transfer, we chamfer the corner of the building itself on that angle, so that angle provides a view shed from Second Ave and Main Street to the church itself. And then we have an outdoor amenity space that kind of comes over the parking area. And then along the left, there's, you know, you're going to have that visibility of our apartment building along Main Street, so we also want to make sure that that style of the building, that side of the building is also addressed architecturally and doesn't overall impact negatively the Main Street area. You can go ahead. Here's a more close-up view here. So this is the parking entrance, and then there's the, the lower, the cafe would be on that right corner. Above the cafe and above that area, that's another amenity space for the residents to have a outdoor seating area in that kind of courtyard field and the building, the kind of way it steps down. We think it's important that we kept that base dark and contemporary, because at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is frame the church and complement it and not overtake it. So we have that kind of contrast between the historic church and the more contemporary architecture for the building. Go ahead. So this is a view looking northwest from the bonded Second, so there's the front of the church on the right, and then our building kind of set back. You know, we have like a stone type of panel with the vertical windows, and a lot of like the Gothic architecture and the church architecture, vertical rhythm is important, so we just want to kind of show, pay homage to that, but not straight up copy it, so we have that kind of temporary motif of that. So that's that. This is a view from Third Ave. So now you can see how the building is set back and it starts to tuck its way behind these buildings, and it really, not that strong of a view or an impact, you only see pretty much the top two floors. It's set far enough back, so that's just another perspective there. And this is, sorry with the mask. The overall volume, this is the overall perspective looking northeast, so you can see again the importance of framing the front of the church. That blue roof area along the church side will eventually be balcony space for those, those townhouses that are inside. Or we have, you can see the amenity space at the roof and at the lower level, and then starting to frame that courtyard. I mean, we don't, schematic in nature, so there's a lot more landscaping and site design to do around that corner, but you can see, get a sense of their overall fit of the church and the building next to each other, and how there's plenty of light and air around the two of them, and they both complement each other. Go ahead. And then here, we have kind of that, that visual of where the cafe area is going to be, that little plaza, and then there's that gate, and the hall, the sidewalk that goes back into that courtyard space is that entry spots for those other townhouses. So that's the private area for residents only, and then we have this flow for people to, you know, appreciate the church and, you know, just come and gather and, you know, try to be a part of the community and compliment, you know, the area that it is and, you know, create a nice architectural building as well. So I know I had to be quick, so I ran through that really fast. Trying to think if I have any other comments.
I think one of the most critical things that we were trying to achieve with this particular development was to ensure that it was not only an amenity, a series of amenities for the residents, but also an amenity to the community. And what I mean by that is, is that my client spends a lot of time, because he lives in and around the area, and he's just watched people come and, you know, whether they're praying at the church or drawing the architecture or sitting there and observing it, taking photos. It is clearly a building with its historic merit to it, and I think the preservation of it was, you know, a critical goal from the inception, and the idea of being able to build something in harmony that, as Daniel indicated, that would integrate and really with the visual acuity of how it's been opened up, so that the building itself is not, you know, basically clamped down where no one's actually appreciating its full scale and scope, I think was extremely important. When, when we talk about this, the cafe style juice bar that we have envisioned, the idea is to have people use that as an amenity within the community, but also have the community come and enjoy and participate, sit out there within it and be able to, you know, participate in the overall view and the community in that, in that area. Were there any specific questions on some of the outlines that we had put into play?
So I'd just like to congratulate you for keeping the church intact. We've lost so many of our historic buildings, and I appreciate the fact that the church will remain as part of this design.
Thank you.
52 apartments, I mean, one, two, and three bedrooms.
I have, from the market rate, I have eight one bedrooms, 33 two bedrooms. In the affordables, I have two one bedrooms, six two bedrooms, and three three bedrooms.
Let's start again, I did that right?
Oh, sorry, I didn't realize you.
You're slow.
Okay, no problem. I have eight one-bedroom market rate, 33 two-bedroom market rate, and then as of the 20% affordable that we're providing, we have two affordable one bedrooms, we have six affordable two bedrooms, and three affordable three bedrooms.
And the square footage of the one and twos, market rate will be the same as square footage for the affordable?
That's correct. The affordable units won't meet the standard zoning ordinance area for, for units. They won't be per the state guidelines, they'll be per your zoning ordinance.
I'll ask Michelle, do they meet the parking requirements?
Well, we're asking for a development area, it would create new regulations. I believe that the architect just said that it's going to be a 1.2 per, no matter what the bedroom size, right?
That's correct.
Right, so that's, and your bedrooms are, not the affordable, the market or what makes the bedrooms?
We have 33 two bedrooms, and then we have eight one bedrooms, and the townhouses would be three bedrooms. So there's seven three-bedroom townhouses.
And no, and with no parking provided for the quarters?
That's correct.
So that is, that is different than?
Michelle, use the microphone.
Go ahead, Michelle.
So that, that is a different standard than in our R1 district.
What is the standard of the R1?
It's a one, it's a 1.5 for a typical house, like a three-bedroom house.
This is a 1.2, correct?
Correct.
And I think it's important in the Main Street redevelopment that that's at a .9. So we're looking, you know, something, obviously we're above that standard, of course, and that's where we were trying to continue to integrate, obviously, maximum parking capacity with that.
Is this your first project in Asbury?
My first project in Asbury?
The LLC.
Well, we've, I got a separate project approved about six months ago for, just a three-unit project. That project.
Thank you. Questions?
Nothing.
Anything else you want to add?
No, I think, you know, from our perspective, we'd just like to get a little bit of feedback, obviously, from you guys relative to your overview of how you perceive the project concerns that you may have in terms of our continual discussions or ability to have continued discussions with the salon, so to try and hopefully move this further along.
I imagine you're going to be asking for a pilot?
Correct.
Okay. At this point, got it? Listen to it, I'll digest it, if I have more questions, I'll forward them to Michelle to get in touch with you.
Okay. And architecturally, okay on the elements, any particular things that we need to visit? Anything that you have of concern as the, we can take away to be able to?
We'd like as much green as possible. I mean, so, yeah, obviously, that's going to be, we'll start with us and then TRC, then planning board, but I mean, the bottom line is as green as possible and...
Okay.
Just adhering to all the guidelines.
One of the things we talked about briefly this evening, because we went and walked the church again with my clients, and like I said, they spent a lot of time here and reviewing this, is we talked about potentially additional amenity courtyard space and trying to integrate that maybe in and around the church and creating some more green space in there, but we obviously have to watch out for the site triangles. We have Bob Curley from Mazer onboard as well, and Bob's obviously very familiar with the professionals, and we're certainly, you know, ready to work with him.
He has a long knowledge of Asbury Park.
Yes, he does.
I meant to ask you at the beginning picture, so the rectory gets socked down?
Yes.
Okay. So I have, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for your time, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're now on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Chapman.
I've got nothing at this time.
Councilmember Clayton?
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Kendall?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Nothing at this time.
Mayor Moore?
Yeah, we'll make it anonymous.
Matters from the city manager?
Nothing at all.
Matters from the city attorney?
Likewise.
We will now move on to the public participation portion of the meeting. May I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit for each speaker? Move to open? All in favor? Any members of the public who wish to be heard, please go to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
If you want to talk, you got to get up to the mic, folks.
Motion closed.
Hi, I'm here on behalf of Sackman Enterprises and our commercial tenants.
Is the microphone?
Yes.
Okay.
You have to just speak into the mic, please.
Hi, I'm here on behalf of Sackman Enterprises.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, it's Frances Blake.
And your address?
130 West 32nd Street, New York, New York, 10024. I'm a principal of Sackman Enterprises, and I'm here to speak on behalf of our commercial tenants down on Cookman Avenue. We have approximately, well, we have 23 commercial tenants in our buildings, in the CBD, with approximately 592 full and part-time employees, and they are requesting that we keep the street open through the end of October. And so that's my request. Closed, sorry. I'm sorry. Keep the street closed through the end of October. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Rita Moreno, 8th Avenue. I don't know where to start, there's so many things that were wrong this week. I'll start with the reports that we read in the newspaper. The fire department's fallen apart, which we've known for 15 years. The library's not working correctly, there's something wrong with the director. Your spot zoning on the beachfront, not on the beachfront, on Cookman Avenue, what else is going on? Everything that's wrong has happened this week. You have two new flag poles, couple of thousand dollars there, just to put a special flag up. You have a councilwoman that lives on Cookman Avenue and doesn't know where the 800 block is. You have another councilwoman that abstains because of certain material that's being bought from her husband's company, which doesn't make it live just because you abstain, and you know better. And everything seems to be going wrong. You have another councilman that thinks he's a party director. All he did on his, he's got his picture on the flyer and the recreation department. And meanwhile, my taxes have gone up $500 in one quarter. Nobody's watching what's going on around here. You never collected the money from Me Too, $30,000. You never collected money from anything that was outstanding. Instead of concentrating on all these little parties that you're having and picture-taking, how about concentrating on the money issue? And now you're blaming the school because our taxes went up, but meanwhile, our budget stays the same, and the pilot money gets spent by you. You get the school money from the pilot programs, but it doesn't seem to be going there for some reason. You get 95% of that money and 5% to the county, we know all that. Meanwhile, everything's going wrong. And the parking ramp, we didn't build that, and we shouldn't, because Saxon was supposed to build it on Cookman Avenue there by the press building. Nothing seems to happen. You build buildings on sidewalks now? By the moonstruck, you have to go over the sidewalk to get in the street, and we lost all those parking spaces because somebody changed the rule, the planner probably changed the rule that you don't have to have any space in the front for a building. It's ridiculous. Those buildings look terrible. Two of them on Lake Avenue, they're both on the sidewalk. No respect to the business next door, for one thing. Nobody cares about anything. Nobody cares about ocean growth. They, you know, I don't blame them for locking the gates. I mean, do you have any answers for what's going on?
Okay, thank you.
No, I want an answer.
When you sit down, I'm going to answer what I can answer.
Okay. I don't want a yes or no answer either.
The only, you had a lot of complaints, and so I can't answer them, but one thing you're totally wrong about is the city taxes. This year, the budget went down $443,000. The city budget. That's the only thing we can control, Rita. We cannot control the Board of Education, we cannot control the library, we cannot control the county, the county open space. The only thing we can control is the city budget. So you said it went up, it went down $443,000 from 2017 to 2021, and went down over a million dollars as far as what the city's spending. So, and all the other things seem to be just complaints that we've answered before, so I don't have any answers for you there except past comments. So I'll just comment on and answer your question about the taxes, that you were wrong. They did go down on the city's end. Nobody's blaming it on the Board of Education. The facts are the facts, and everybody in their tax bill got sent a letter, frequently asked questions, and it was explained. So, thank you, go ahead, sir.
Do you have an answer to that question? The pilot program money? You don't answer that.
Okay, Rita. Sir?
Okay. Yeah, my name is Liam Boland, and I, I used to have nine properties in Asbury, I'm down to two, I'm kind of trying to get out, but the crime on the west side is, it's a third world country over there, and I don't have three minutes, I could go all day, but I had a trailer stolen, I reported it stolen to the police, they're like, um, yeah, well, we're busy now, it's Friday, check back around Wednesday, your case will be assigned to somebody, you know, and then somebody will look into it. Two weeks later, I get assigned to somebody, $10,000 for the tools and a $5,000 trailer are gone. Neptune recovered the trailer, and the tools had all been sold by the time, Asbury did have it on film, they had a camera on my trailer. All they had to do is go look at the camera and go get the guy, but they waited a week. Now, there's two TV shows. One's called First 48, which is what we had when I called the police, and then the second one's called Cold Case, which is what it was by the time the police got to me. Now, if I park at a yellow curb on Cookman Avenue, the police find me in 30 seconds, but they, they don't have time for, for real felony. It was felony trespassing and grand theft. And when the guy did get caught, the, I got, didn't get my tools back, the officer wasn't there at court, they didn't have the video surveillance at the court, and I told them, just let the guy go, because my shit's gone. But there's been four, four gun incidents on Borden Avenue in the last four months, and there's no police there whatsoever. The drug trade is 24/7, and it's there because... just let the guy go because my shit's gone. But there's been four, four gun incidents on Borden Avenue in the last four months, and there's no police there whatsoever. The drug trade is 24/7 and it's there because it's allowed to be there. It's there because of lack of effort. It's there because nobody cares, okay? And to the tax revenue thing, I'd love to pay more taxes. My taxes over there are so cheap. You know why? What's a house worth next to a crack house? So if you guys could clean it up, you'd all get a raise, a pay raise. Wouldn't it be nice if you could double or triple the tax revenue from the southwest corner? Reality is you can. And what's worse, I had my car towed a week ago for no expired, uh, registration, which is totally my fault, and I get that. And I got a ticket and they towed the car. In any other town, that would be acceptable to me, but in a town of lawlessness where when my neighbor's revving his Corvette engine at 2:00 in the morning, and when I say Corvette engine, it's a, it's a 2021 with the 800 horsepower twin turbos, and the police, I call the police and they come by and they give them a warning. He's double parked, the gull wings are up, people are in the, in the street drinking beers, no tickets are written. I had to call the police 15 minutes later because he didn't move the car. Police had to come back, still no tickets written. You know, people are allowed to put speakers on their porch and crank them up to crazy volume at 3:00 in the morning. I shouldn't have to call the police at 3:00 in the morning and tell them there's a speaker on a porch. They should be able to hear it themselves on their patrol and figure it out. There's no presence until somebody gets shot and then there's 15 police cars driving in circles. We don't need 15 police cars driving in circles after the guns came out. That's a day late and a dollar short. It's a, it's a dog and pony show. You know, we need the police presence before the guns come out.
Thank you, and your time's up, and I'm just gonna, if you're beginning, uh, part about the trailer and everything, can you look into that? Because if what you're saying like is the truth, like we can't work with you today, we'll be back in a couple of days. To me, that's kinda unacceptable. Can you look into that and get in touch with him?
What's sad is Neptune found the trailer.
Okay, okay, we, we understand and your time's up, sir. So if you, if you can give some type of information where the city manager can get.
That's useless. They know, they know.
The city manager will get in touch with you if you give her your information.
They know.
Okay, next. Okay, thank you.
You know what it is? It's not, it's not a money grab. It's not, it's not policing for profit, so you guys don't care. Listen, I'm a taxpayer. I pay for the microphone and your silence in the building here. And when someone can tell you how to better improve your community, you should actually listen instead of silencing them. It's really sad. But what you're showing right now is you really don't care because I'm, I'm bringing to your attention what is wrong and affording you the opportunity to fix it, and you don't want to know about it. And that's why Asbury's what it is.
Anybody else? Please come over and tell me. No, just go to the microphone. You have to state your name and address, please.
How you doing? My name's Rafael Flores. I'm from 47 Borden Avenue in Asbury. I actually live at 506, but we bought the garage and house next to Liam who just spoke. Um, I'm 28 years old. I'm an accountant. I work in Florida for half the year. I come back here in the summertime. I fix and repair jet skis and boats and cars with my dad who's over there. My dad dropped quite a bit of some money with, uh, my mom on a investment property on the south side of town where we have a shop and it's over 1,000 square feet. Every day I'm there. I just broke my arm. I'm in a lot of pain. I don't want to be here, but the bottom line is, is that every day there's somebody standing at the front door of my garage. They're standing on the front porch of my house. They're pissing and pooping on the side of my house. I call the police every other day. If you look at call logs from 47 Borden Avenue, the police are called every other day. We're not asking for much. All we're asking for is a police officer to be put outside of the house because within every 10 minutes, you can see four or five felonies happen. Today, the exact trailer that Liam was talking about that was recovered, my father and I just passed by the property to look at it to make sure, you know, everything's good. We drive by, there's six people trying to break into that trailer. It's not a joke. There's people over there getting shot. We were working in the garage three weeks ago, changing brakes on a BMW, and three bullets hit the side of our garage. There's people getting shot over there. It's not a joke. And somebody's gonna wind up in a body bag and dead, and then you guys are gonna take it seriously then. So please, all I have to ask for is increase the community policing on that side of town and just put a cop car at the corner of Springwood and Borden, and I promise you, you will watch the foot traffic of narcotics being picked up at that barber shop location drop by half. Guys just need to put a, a cop car there. It's not much. I mean, that's it. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, and I'm sure you'll see an increase in that area. Thank you, sir.
Hello, Peter Siegel, 1412 Main Street. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I came tonight really just to sit and listen. I wasn't preparing any comments, but I, I learned something tonight. Uh, first, when I came, I had the chance to hear about the application that's pending in front of the city for the development of the apartment building on, on Second Avenue, which is exciting to see. Uh, it's exciting to see people want to develop. It's exciting to see people want to spend money and invest in our city. So that, that's good stuff. Um, I say that because it's a challenging environment that we have here to make investments. So, uh, I, I hope that that application is given serious consideration because it'd be really nice to see, uh, new investments, uh, from, from new people. Uh, the flip side of that coin is as I was listening to that, uh, I felt, I felt some different things. Um, these are people that had, uh, that are newer to making investment in our city and they're gonna be seeking a pilot. Uh, properties that are in the pilots are not subject to the S2 school funding tax increase, are not subject to, uh, other taxation in town, and are not subject to several other things in town. And, and it's, it struck me as, as ironic because there's property owners, developers and business owners who have been in town for a long, 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 long time, sweating it out, duking it out, investing over and over and over again. And the burden of all of those things that I just mentioned falls on them, but the, these, these newer investors that come in, and believe me, I want them to come in, uh, are able to ask for pilots and perhaps get them. And I, uh, it, it's, uh, it's an ironic thing and, and a, and a double edged sword for me to, to listen to. Um, I'm a business owner in town and a developer in town and have been sweating it out here for over 20 years. And, uh, my taxes, like, like, um, uh, this woman here to my left, Rita, sorry Rita, I forgot your name, uh, uh, was saying how her taxes were going up. And I, I do understand it's a result of the, of the school tax portion, not, not the city's portion of the budget. Uh, and Rita, you can expect those taxes to continue to go up over the next four years. Uh, all of our property taxes are gonna go up as a result of the S2 school funding bill. Um, and, uh, so, you know, you've got these longtime residents that continue to pay the increases while the newer investors perhaps are getting these pilot programs and, and not subject to all these different things which have been very, uh, contentious, uh, issues in our community. And it just, it struck me as interesting. I also note that there's a lot of new people, at least new to me, sitting in the audience tonight. I, I heard that there's a lot of business owners from Cookman Avenue, uh, making a request. So I hope that that's really, uh, considered and granted as well because I think it's important to support our businesses that employ people. Uh, it's big stuff. It's important stuff, and I hope that that's, that, that cry for help is heard. Thank you.
Thank you. And you're right, it is a double edged sword because as much as we're trying to bring affordable housing into the city, there's not one developer, and you know most of them, that's come forward and said they'll build anything without a pilot providing affordable housing. So you're right, it is a double edged sword. Anybody else like to be heard?
My name is Scott Mizrahi. Uh, I live at 601 Madison, and I also own Lola's Cafe on Cookman Avenue. And going back to, uh, the street closure, uh, I just want to express this, that, uh, I'm also a resident here, and I know this benefits me solely by keeping the street open, but as a resident, I also support the town and I'm a team player. So I'm not here just saying just for me because, uh, keeping the street open would, would help my business, but I think it's been helping the town. We have a petition here. Uh, I don't know how many hundreds of signatures from people, um, in town and out of town. Uh, we, my business is right above Sackman's, um, building, uh, the Steinback Building, and I speak to the residents there all the time. I speak to the residents across the street. Everybody is in favor of what we've done. I've gotten compliments after compliment how lovely it is having this. Uh, we had a quick meeting with Donna and she expressed some of the views that the councils brought up, and I just don't understand some of them. There's one point about see here now, which we understand that you might need the road access for see here now. But, um, see here now downtown, I could give you my records for two years ago when they were here. That was the slowest weekend I had all that summer. There were parking spots everywhere. So see here now really doesn't affect us downtown, but if you need it for the flow of the traffic, us as a group will work with you and put everything off the street and open it up. But to just to get a letter on a Monday morning saying, you know what, we're gonna close after Labor Day. Sorry, let's move on. But nobody discussed this. I don't know, um, Matt had brought up a point of one of the attorneys saying that, uh, the governor had granted us till 2022, and Donna brought up, uh, your town, uh, attorney, said in his opinion, that's not true. What is, who's my, my opinion? I say yes. I, I, so I'd like a, a better dialogue to tell us why we should close the street. And if I, you, you make a valid point, we'll pack up tomorrow if we have to. I mean, listen, we love the town. I love this town, and I would support the town 100%. So I just want to hear more dialogue and maybe we could work something out that would work, benefit both of us. I just don't want to get a letter one day saying, you have to move your stuff off the street and we're done. And again, I'm not speaking just for me. I'm speaking for all my customers, everybody who comes to town. I'll show you the petition. It's 50/50. Residents are not, that really love it. Uh, I know there's some residents that hate it, but we have to go with, uh, the masses. What, 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 what is right is everybody's opinion, not just the councils or your attorney. I think we have to speak, and we have to speak our, all our opinions. I know James has some vocal opinions too about it. So, uh, all right, that's all I have to say. But again, I, I'm, I'm a team player for Asbury, not only for our business, but for Asbury as a whole. So.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, guys. James Avery. Uh, I'm the owner and operator of the Bonnie Reed at 525 Cookman Avenue. You know, uh, first of all, I can tell you from me, I, I wouldn't be here today operating the Bonnie Reed or about to open the Black Swan if it wasn't for the street closure. That was a huge lifeline, so thank you to the town for figuring that out. I think every restaurant and business on that street said the same thing. Uh, I don't mean to sell you guys the value of keeping the street open. I think we know it's a nice experience. It did a lot for the town, but I just want to share with you, you know, kind of these quick decisions without any conversation, how they impact. So, you know, last summer, the outdoor dining, it, it helped. We didn't have the indoor, but it was difficult. And when I spoke with you, John, over the phone, I, I'd said that, you know, there were some problems there with it when I was pushing to get inside open back up. But I adapted. I overcame it. I spent a lot of money. Part of the reason why I shut down all last winters because I was losing $40,000 a month, and I decided that if I'm gonna make, make up for it in the summer, I have to make some changes. I had to redo my bar to, uh, fix the handle of the volume, and I had to invest in my kitchen. And we did that, and I invested in management and more people under the, uh, understanding that I would have until November 30th to monetize on the outside on all my investments. In addition to that, you know, I, I've been staffed all summer, thank God. Um, and it's, it's been a good summer, a great summer. I have all these great people that I promised things to, that I promised, you know, jobs after Labor Day to, and I now have to lay them off in two weeks because I'm losing half my business, half my seating capacity, half everything. And it's, it's just after the year we had last year of starving for money to have it and then just have it get taken away. It's just, it stings a lot. You also may know that I'm, I'm opening a new restaurant and, um, you know, where Fish used to be in Modine. I invested 15, $20,000 on outdoor furniture that now I have to hurry up and put in storage for the year maybe, or I don't know what we're doing next year. We haven't had that conversation yet, but I don't really know what to do. But again, nobody, you know, I thought I had till November 30th, and it's just another frustration that after the year we had, it's just, it's, it's painful to go through. Um, you know, I understand you guys have to do, you have to do. I, I understand decisions aren't made in the vacuum and that it's, it's part of a bigger collective thing, but you know, we were told one thing. We adapted. We figured it out. We're, we're doing our best. And, and now it's just kind of like, I just feel like there's just not a lot of regard about these little nuanced things as a business owner we're dealing with. And I just hope you guys can look at it through that lens a little bit. I understand see here now, like maybe there's a way to make it a one-way street, you know? There's, I think there's some other ways. Because I tell you what, on Monday, Labor Day weekend, that's my busiest day. We're all half dead. We've gotten slaughtered all weekend, and I have to wake up, get trucks, break down the outside. All the while, there's revenue to be had there that we desperately needed after a year like that. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, James.
Good evening. My name is Brian Smith from the Asbury Owl House. Um, as James said, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to serve on the township property, the street, as long as we have. It's been a, it's been a blessing. Just some statistical information. We're doing probably about 65% of our business outside, which is thanks to you. However, on the days where it's not nice out, we're basically doing 45% of what we do on a nice day. Question is, are people dining outside as the two other previous business owners have eluded because they enjoy it or just because they feel comfortable being able to eat outside in the COVID environment? And if the outside is taken away, will we be at that 45% that we see on the, the not so nice day? And at that level, as James said, we would be laying off, our staff is about 100. We would probably have to lay off about half. So I don't really think it's just that the consumer is enjoying being outside. In today's environment, I think that's where they feel comfortable eating. If they take that away, you'd be taking away half the business. And I don't really think statistically, I mean, like I said, on the, the not nice days, we're doing 45% of what we do on a nice day. So I don't think more people are gonna come inside. We don't even use our back dining room at this point because people just go outside. So I'd like you to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Matthew Galase, owner of the Asbury Owl House, 531 Cookman Avenue. Also 300 Emery Street, uh, Unit 201 above the location. Um, just to reiterate what James, Scott and Brian said, uh, a little bit about this. Um, literally you guys saved my family and our business by allowing us to have the street. We would have literally closed at the point of that not occurring. So from the bottom of our hearts, we thank you more than you ever know because literally we would be doing something else. Um, so thank you for that. Secondly, um, the street closer, in my opinion, is something that we were so proud of because we invested so much money into it. While in the heart of winter, half the town had nothing going on, we took it upon ourselves to build greenhouses and igloos and keep them for the staff and for the employees to, one, keep them employed and, two, give an experience to the town, which at the time was literally a ghost town. It was us and one other location open. So as Asbury Owl House, we take so much pride in what we did and this community and, and what we were able to do for it. And like I said, thanks to you guys on that. My concern, which no one really brought up yet, is that numbers are rising and restrictions, in my opinion, could be coming back sooner than later. And to take the street away, we're gonna have to get rid of all of that furniture, whether to sell it or whatnot. And then to have the restrictions potentially come back sooner than later, we would have to then reinvest again if you guys decide that we need the street closer again. Because to put a storage unit for all the equipment we have is gonna cost us about $3,500 a month with how much stuff we invested. We've already invested $108,000 into the street since we started day one. So we, you know, took out loans to do so, and we gave everything we had for this. So like I said, with numbers rising, we're very concerned about that. So I just want to know if you guys, is there a plan? Is there a compromise somewhere that maybe we can stay till October to see if the numbers do rise? And then if they do, we can maybe continue outside, turn it into a one-way street like Mike was nice enough to do and help us with last year? Uh, because the retail side then has cars and parking, while our side has no retail on it. It's just the three restaurants, myself, Lola's and Bonnie Reed. So we were able to open up the one-way on the opposite side, allow parking, allow the walk-through on the sidewalk, which I think was beneficial to both sides of the street and both parties. That's just my question to you guys. Is, is there a backup plan if the numbers do rise? Or are we gonna maybe get it again? Because that's a concern for us as well. Once again, I appreciate your time very much. We thank you for everything that you've done, Donna, Mike, everyone. And yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, no, no.
I don't get a second bite?
No, no. One time. Nice try though.
Hi, my name's Helen. Um, I worked for Scott On &amp; Off for five years or so on Cookman, um, at Lola's. I just really quickly wanted, I mean, I don't, everything everyone said was dead on. I just wanted to speak for the employees. Um, you know, the soul of Asbury is the music, the art, the culture, and like, where do those people work? They work at the bars. Um, and- They work at the bars, um, and the restaurants and, uh, yeah, it's just important, you know? And it's important to us to have the flexibility to work outside, to have that option if we don't want to be inside and the, you know, depending on what happens with the pandemic. Um, and it, you know, keeps us employed, so, thank you.
Could you state your name again, ma'am?
I'm Helen.
And your last name, Helen?
Oh, Jason L E E S O N.
Thank you.
And your address?
Um, I'm Neptune, so.
That's okay.
We need your address.
That's all right.
44. Uh, yes. It's 44 Tucker Drive, Neptune City, 077.
Thank you.
No.
Uh, good evening. My name is Frank Galase. I'm one of the owners of the Asbury Owl House. The reason why you all are sitting up there is because you eat, breathe and love the city of Asbury Park. Uh, as my brother mentioned, I can't even fathom, I have three young children, our brother has three young children, Matt's getting married, uh, this upcoming year. I can't imagine where we would be without the steps that you bravely and quickly took to single-handedly save the businesses in Asbury Park. We're forever appreciative of that. Um, and that will never be forgotten on our end. With that being said, we do believe that this decision is just a tad premature. We all understand that this is not forever. This is not something, as much as we would love to have this street closed for the rest of our lives and operate our businesses outside, we understand that that's not the reality of the situation. However, we're in the teeth of this still. And every time you listen to Governor Murphy speak or anyone in, in, in a position of power speak, every single time now, it's the numbers are rising, the numbers are rising. People feel comfortable being outside. Even I, I have people, we, we own multiple restaurants. We heated our outdoor space in Point Pleasant and also in Asbury Park. There's people that even when the heaters weren't working, they sat outside in 10-degree weather with jackets on because they did not feel comfortable walking inside that building. The amount of staff that we have, that if this goes the way that it's heading right now, that we're going to have to lay off is heartbreaking for me because our team, our staff is everything to us. We fought so hard over the past year plus, even when money was coming out of our own pockets, what, to keep everyone that we could possibly keep employed. This is bigger than just what neighbors are upset that there's people out on the street. This is bigger than all of those things. We understand that this is a community and we need to work together, but I feel there's a compromise to be made somewhere. And we're all, you know, intelligent adults that we can put our minds together and come up with the best solution to once again save the businesses of Asbury Park. Because we are heading in the wrong direction right now and to pull this lifeline from us, it's the only thing that kept us in business previously. And in our opinion, it's going to be the only thing that will continue to let our businesses be open. The amount of food that we do now, the, i- i- it's, it's a different world and it's a world that we love living in. And again, we know that this is not forever, but we're just asking for some sort of compromise and extension of this. The day, the, you know, Labor Day weekend, we're just getting busy in New Jersey. This is the local summer. Everybody's ready to come out. They're, they're, they're excited that they're getting the town back and they're ready to flood back into this town again. And the vast majority of people, any, any grocery store, supermarket that you want to run out, everybody has their masks on. They're not ready for this yet. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Louise Murray, 1604 Brand Avenue. Hello. Um, Donna, my condolences to you.
Thanks.
All right. Now on to business. Up, as far as the pilot program goes, it's annoying to me because it's an incentive to get young people or whoever wants to come in Asbury to buy their units. Then all of a sudden, they go, oh, 10 years down the road, oh my God, my taxes went up 40%. Whatever, okay. My taxes went up 40%. Because I don't know if they're aware of it, but I kind of resent that kind of incentive to get people to buy units and say, well, you know, you don't have to do this. But the pilot program has to be explained fully by this council because a lot of people get bits and pieces of it. But one thing I am certain of, and this falls on you, Donna, uh, the businesses in town should be considered first. That means your printers, your, what, whatever retail that can accommodate the city of Asbury Park, plumbing, lumber, whatever. The businesses in Asbury Park should be considered first and all businesses should go to them first, okay? Bottom line is they pay a lot of taxes to stay in this town. A lot of these business people are suffering and you have to give that some consideration. I mean, everybody wants to say, oh, I put the town on the map. No, businesses are doing it. So I want you to reconsider that. And as far as anybody getting lumber someplace else, there are businesses in town where they can get lumber. So I think you should readdress this and look at it. They pay a lot of taxes. Printers, number one, okay? That's another one. They go there, they get their estimates and where do they go to get their printing done? Neptune or someplace else. This is bizarre. This is absolutely, totally bizarre and it's not fair. And let's, let's face it, we got a bad mark anyway, so clean it up, guys.
Okay. Thank you, Louise. Let me just say, as far as you're mentioning printers and lumber, I don't know if a lumberyard in the city.
We can get.
Okay. We go out to bid on that every year. So anybody in the city, the printers can bid and we take the lowest responsible bid and it happened to be somebody from Neptune. Nobody from Asbury Park bid on it, but we do an RFP every year for printing and every other business going. And we're able to do some business with the hardware store, but he doesn't sell wood. But, you know, lumber per se, but Jaeger and Bradley Beach or whoever does. So I mean, we do go out to bid and we have to, and we do every year for everything. And that's why we have a, what's her name?
She's our director of QPA.
The QPA, Qualified Purchasers and Agents. So because it's state law, you have to do that. So we, you know, we just can't give to locals if they're the highest bidder or if they don't bid. I mean, and if they need to be reminded to bid, we'll send them out, we'll put it on AP TV 10 more times. Anybody else?
Ginnyville, 15 Mulberry Lane, Colts Neck, New Jersey. I work for Sackman Enterprises. I, um, personally have worked with all these people and in a panic last year, when they were panicking, they were panicking about what was going to happen. We all worked together, us and you, to open, to close those streets. And they're all here today, okay? They're all here and they're surviving. However, the surge is coming and if we don't allow them to continue to be open, the, the end may not be as favorable as we want it to be. Furthermore, I personally don't want to eat inside anymore. I'm 57 years old. I am vaccinated, but I don't want to eat inside. So if you close all the streets and they can't eat outside, I'm going to another town and all my friends are coming with me because we're not going to eat inside. So we're going to give that business to Red Bank, Neptune, Bradley Beach. So I really want you to think of that when you're considering this decision. And also in the past, when we've had issues, okay? I managed all the liquor license for Sackman. When we've had problems, we've all worked together and we've come up with a very viable solution for everybody. And I'm asking you to do the same right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joan Farkas. I live at 926 Adelphia Road in Freehold, New Jersey, 07728. Uh, I serve as the chairperson for the Monmouth County Chapter of Our Revolution. And I'm here really to thank the councils, the deputy mayor and the mayor for considering a Medicare for All resolution that is on the agenda this evening. Um, as you've heard from everybody who's come up, they've talked about the pandemic and how the pandemic has brought to this community. So I think the fact that you are willing to, even in a symbolic gesture, recognize that our current healthcare system is not serving the community, especially in the face of a global pandemic and a public health crisis. As you hear these businesses talking about their employees potentially losing their jobs, it means they potentially lose their employer-based health insurance. We all know that that's the last thing that anybody needs right now, especially if a surge is coming in. So to be willing to acknowledge that, um, the time has come for us to have a universal single payer healthcare system that is free at the point of service is long be, long past overdue. And I appreciate you all being here. We worked with, um, folks from Trinity Episcopal as well as National Action Network. Um, and I do have a letter from one of the interns, Alexander Jacobs, who is in Asbury Park resident, as well as an intern at the Trinity Episcopal Church. Um, he is actually too ill to be here tonight, ironically. Um, he also suffers from a chronic health condition and he just is, wants to point out that at this stage of the game, it is more urgent than ever that we recognize this. He sees that the people that he works through, through Trinity Church's social justice program are having to choose between purchasing insulin, purchasing food. Those that are homeless have no way of knowing how they're going to get, um, any sort of medical care. Um, as a person with a chronic illness, Alexander would also like to point out that he knows how, um, complex the insurance company is frequently when he has, uh, procedures or medications ordered by doctors. He has them rejected by his insurance company without any explanation. And, um, he said that he can't imagine how the people in the community that are not social workers and don't know how to fill out forms or aren't attorneys and don't know how to navigate these things can possibly be expected to continue. So again, I just thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Felicia Simmons, 1034 Soul Avenue, Asbury Park, uh, president of Monmouth Ocean County National Action Network and also, um, standing with Our Revolution, um, for single, for our, sorry, Rita, never been told I'm quiet. Um, standing with Our Revolution on behalf of single payers. Um, right now in this time, we, we need that. Um, I know it's just a symbolic gesture, but it's hopefully we continue to push it, um, through Washington and local government. Uh, we have, I stand here with the businesses, speaking about it, and I stand on behalf of a friend of mine, I'm going to call A.D., who lost her home, who lost everything and now on the cusp of losing her apartment because she's a survivor of cancer two times. And she just now got approved with $0 in her account left. Um, that's why the importance of a single payer's or people who gig work and they don't have insurance and they, they know that they're sick and they know that they suffer a long time friend who suffers from, um, Lyme disease and, um, and diabetes, um, who suffers every day and wondered how to pay for everything because it just, what she has just doesn't cover it. So again, thank you for the, um, for the resolution and thank you for continuing to push and we'll continue to push to make sure that Washington hears the voices of the people. So thank you.
Thank you, Felicia.
Hi, my name's Nicole Panisak. I live at 510 Arnold Ave in Point Pleasant Beach, New Jersey. Um, so I manage the Asbury Owl House. I've worked in Asbury Park for the past six years. Um, I've been at Asbury Owl House for the, that entirety. Um, last summer was extremely difficult as well as this past summer, this past year as a whole. Um, I couldn't be prouder to work in Asbury Park, um, to work where we were able to open the street to businesses and to have that community aspect, um, to work with the other businesses on Cookman Ave and to be able to provide a safe environment for our guests was huge for us. Um, not only providing a safe environment for our guests, but it was huge to provide a safe environment for our employees. A lot of our employees, whether they, you know, are college kids that live at home with their parents or, you know, all have different living histories, you know, all have different, um, you know, personal things that are, you know, from their home life. And they felt safe at work. They felt safe working outside, even though there were days where it was 95 degrees, we all had masks on, we were crazy busy, like we did our best. Um, our staff enjoyed coming to work. They felt safe coming to work. Um, and it's extremely sad and, you know, heartbreaking to me if we have to let those employees go. Um, if we have to let, you know, the customers down who feel safe eating outside, um, it's extremely just heartbreaking in general. You know, Asbury Park created this environment that made everyone feel safe and everyone as a community kind of worked together. Um, and it's going to be sad to see that go away. I know that all the businesses on Cookman Ave has, have done the most amazing job adapting because that's all any of us could do within the past year was adapt and just make changes and make things work and figure things out. Um, and we all worked extremely hard to do that. And, you know, it's just going to be really devastating if this happens. And I know like a lot of the others that came up and spoke said was, you know, we're more than willing to work with you. We want to work with you. We want to all come to some compromise that benefits everything, but with, you know, um, a surge possibly coming in this, it's extremely terrifying for us. Um, it's terrifying for me to have to let off, I have 100 employees that are, you know, have been with us through the pandemic, which is really a hectic time for any business. Um, and it would just be a shame to let those people go and to kind of lose the environment that our customers and people from out of town and locals are comfortable eating at. Um, so I just hope you really think about that and the safety of everything when you're considering everything about the street. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public participation portion of the meeting is now closed.
I'm just going to say, I, you know, I just want to thank everybody for coming out and talking about Cookman Ave and, um, Sackman's right, we have worked together. I'm sure they're working with their businesses now, so you don't have to let people go, right? With reduced rents or some sort of abatements. But, you know, hopefully we can all work together to work something out. But I'm, I'm sure Sackman, in addition to the city, is working with their local businesses in some way as well. That's it.
Just one thing, I think you mentioned you had a petition. If you want to leave it, please, okay, please, just bring it up and, yep. Thank you.
Okay. We're now on to the minutes. I have the municipal council executive meeting of July 28th, the 4:00 PM meeting, the municipal council regularly meeting July 28th, the 6:00 PM meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Roll call, council member Chapman. Yes. Council member Clayton.
Yes.
Council member Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to the consent agenda. We have, all matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are to be routine in nature and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said items shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On the consent agenda, we have resolutions 2021-367 through 2021-371. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, council member Chapman.
Yes.
Council member Clayton.
Yes.
Council member Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are now on to the individual resolutions. Our first individual resolution is 2021-372, a resolution approving the payment of bills. Second. Roll call, council member Chapman.
Yes.
Council member Clayton.
Yes.
Council member Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Second resolution is 2021-373, a resolution authorizing the purchase of materials needed for North End Beach Locker roof replacement.
Move it.
Roll call, council member Chapman.
Yes.
Council member Clayton.
Yes.
Council member Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-374, a resolution awarding an emergency contract to Millennium Communications Group for camera repairs and equipment.
Move it. Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-375, a resolution awarding a contract to Millennium Communication Group for yearly camera support and service. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-376, a resolution to approve the city of Asbury Park to enter into a shared service agreement with the county of Monmouth and applying for a LEAP implementation grant in the amount of $250,000 and to support implementation of the shared service. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-377, a resolution in support of the Medicare-for-all Act of 2021.
Move it. Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are now on to ordinances for introduction. We have ordinance 2021-32, a capital ordinance providing for records management improvements by and in the city of Asbury Park and the county of Monmouth, the state of New Jersey, appropriating $125,000, therefore, from the capital improvement fund to pay the cost thereof with a public hearing date of September 8th. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to public hearings. Our first public hearing will be on ordinance 2021-29, which is an ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending Chapter 28 of the Code of the City of Asbury Park regarding health regulations pertaining to what constitutes an abandoned vehicle. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Move to open. Second.
All in favor?
Melody, prior to public, Mr. Mandel will celebrate.
Right.
Thank you. This ordinance is to amend the city code to define what constitutes an abandoned vehicle. And it would be adding that an abandoned vehicle is a vehicle that is parked without being moved for a period of 30 days or more. This would be treated as, the enforcement of this would be treated as any other abandoned vehicle in that after 30 days, a tow sticker would be placed on the vehicle if it is not removed within two weeks or moved. The city would then tow the vehicle.
Any members of the public that wish to be heard on ordinance 2021-29, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and your comments must only be about the ordinance being presented for public hearing.
Hi, Rita Moran, Eighth Avenue. How are you going to know if the car's on Street 30 days? That's one question. I have two that are there every day. They only move when the street cleaner comes and then they put them back. So how do you know? Happened in the ordinance, I didn't read it.
So that's exactly one way we would, the police officers would know. They would review the vehicle and then review it 30 days later. If there's a large amount of debris under the vehicle, that's a pretty good indication that the vehicle has not moved in those 30 days. So if it moves for street cleaning and, you know, obviously the street would be cleaned underneath it, it would be clear that the vehicle has moved.
And would have been considered an abandoned vehicle.
Correct.
So are you going to mark the tire or something?
Actually, marking the tires is no longer legal under a Supreme Court case, but we do have equipment on the enforced parking enforcement vehicles that do take pictures of the license plate and they have GPS coordinates. So they'll be able to tell in 30 days if it's in the exact spot that it was in before.
I don't know. Try it.
Right now, we can't do anything. If a vehicle's parked for like 60 days in front of your house, Rita, and it has a registration and everything, we can't do anything. So, what?
It's an empty truck.
No, no, okay, bad example, okay. If it's parked in front of my house and it has a legal registration, everything, we can't do anything. But changing this ordinance after 30 days, we can start the process to tow. And we do have the license plate readers that can track that. Correct, Michael?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to be heard?
Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor? The public hearing is now closed on ordinance 2021-29, a motion to adopt ordinance 2021-29.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore. Our second ordinance...
Yes.
Our second ordinance for a public hearing is 2021-30, an ordinance amending the central business district redevelopment plan to permit microbreweries on Block 2404 on Cookman Avenue between Bond Street and Press Plaza. Michelle Alonso, the director of planning and redevelopment, will provide a brief overview before we open to the public.
Good evening. So I think the summary is basically in the title that this is the southern side of Cookman Avenue between Bond Street and Press Plaza and includes the tax block with the frontage on Lake to permit microbreweries to be on this tax block in the CBD because they were not permitted previously. And that's all this amendment is.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 2021-30?
Move to open. Second.
All in favor? The public hearing is now open on ordinance 2021-30. Any members of the public who wish to be heard, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and your comments must be about the ordinance being presented for public hearing.
This is the brewery, right? Oh, Rita Moran, Eighth Avenue, Asbury Park. This is the wrong kind of business for the wrong time, for the street that you're on. There is hardly anything on Cookman Avenue that you could spend money on. It's not a business district. It's a drinking district and a restaurant district. You have enough bars. I don't know how many bars you have. It's more than 45 because some people have two or three bars on one license. It's the wrong business for Cookman Avenue. Let them put it someplace else. I mean, Sackman seems to get everything he wants. There's no parking to begin with and you say, in a business district, you don't have to have parking. What kind of a rule is that? What kind of a rule is that? You never even changed it. You should change some of these rules. There's no parking there. And now you lost all the parking with the tables in the street anyway. How are you going to run a brewery on Cookman Avenue? You need stores there. You need people to come and shop there, too. It's not just a drinking hole. It used to be a family business. It used to be a family town. Now all you have is people coming to Cookman Avenue to drink and then going home. It's not, that's not a good place to put it. I don't care what he thinks and he seems to be running the show. Tell him to build a parking ramp and then maybe you'll consider it. How about bargaining with him? Doing something. But that's not the right business for that spot. They should have all little stores in there so that you could go there and buy something. We can't even shop. A thousand dollars, I couldn't spend it on Cookman Avenue. Where am I going to go to shop? We don't have a business district. We don't have an industrial park. We don't have anything. We don't have neither one of those things. All we have is restaurants and bars. And I feel sorry for these people, too, but we lost a lot of money with that little street closing and you know it. The meter money. Well, we always get a report on that. We never get a report on that either.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, Felicia Simmons, Soul Avenue, Asbury Park. I am, I want to say, I'm not necessarily glad for a brewery, but I'm glad to see that we are amending districts that have been changed over the last few years. And I am happy to see other parts of districts that are zoned, that aren't currently zoned for the same, in the future to open up the town. So that's pretty much, I just wanted to put that on the statement.
Thank you.
And I agree, we could barter more.
Motion closed.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor? The public hearing is now closed on ordinance 2021-30, a motion to adopt ordinance 2021-30.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
No.
Councilmember Clayton.
No.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
I'm going to vote yes, but I'm not going to vote yes yet. I'm just going to explain where I do agree with Rita, and I don't know why these two voted no, but I mean, I've been saying it for years. I've got no support, so maybe I'll get support now, saying like, we just can't keep on letting everybody build everything downtown and not provide parking. But that's the way the ordinance is written. To hold this against the gentleman that's applying is like, you know, I raised holy heck about it at the planning board, you know, but because it's the law. I think it's our responsibility to change the law and to like, how do we let commercial buildings have no parking? How do we let bars have no parking? Again, I've been saying this for years, so hopefully now I got two. Does that mean I've got two people that are going to, looking to change?
For me, it's not just about parking. It's also, I'm tending to agree with Rita that we have enough bars and this is just another very, very large building taking up a lot of space for a microbrewery. And I think it should be some more cancer for all of the city.
Okay, well, I probably, Fred probably should hold me in control that I was speaking differently from the ordinance at hand. I had to say that because I've been saying it for years. So I do agree with Rita. I don't say it's the wrong business for downtown, but I say it's ridiculous that this mayor